Here we go.
Oh, we are all this.
And they. Hello. Welcome. To tonight. Lisa, can you follow all?
Inspector Aaron.
Here.
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Inspector Walker.
Here.
Inspector Roche.
Here.
Inspector Weber.
Here.
Inspector Diaz.
Here.
And Inspector LaLaverde.
Last but not least. Here.
At seven present at six o'clock.
Great. Can we all stand and pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I'd like to entertain a moment to approve our meeting agenda minutes from the school board meeting from February fourteenth, 2022. That's tonight. The committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes from January twenty-fourth, 2022, the special school board meeting for January nineteenth and, no, yeah, January nineteenth and January twenty-sixth, 2022, and the personnel committee meeting minutes from January twenty-sixth, 2020.
So moved.
You a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? And tonight for quality in action is Director Kelly Tetrick. Right, we're great. Director of Special Services to provide an overview of our health services. Oh, and Shawnee Kruger.
Yay.
Woo! Welcome. Look at your wearing matching outfit.
We are. You know, we've become very close colleagues in France, let's say.
You have ESP when you were dressing this morning.
That's right.
It's Packer Maroon.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Webb and Community of South St. Paul. My name is Kelly Tetrick. I'm Director of Special Services for the South St. Paul School District. And with me tonight, I've got Shawnee Kruger, Licensed School Nurse and COVID Coordinator for the District of South St. Paul as well. We're here tonight to give you an overview of health services here in the district, a very important department. As Director of Special Services here in South St. Paul, a lot of people, a big bulk of my position is special education programming and staffing and all of the services that encompass special education. But also another department that falls under me is health services. Now, special education and health services have really met some unique challenges, let's say, in the past two years. Unique challenges that I never thought I would be up against, and I don't believe our health services thought that they would be faced with either. But what I really want to say tonight is that because we have a really robust health services department here in South St. Paul in our schools that really meets the needs of our students, our staff, and our families, and importantly, our community as well, I feel that we were really well positioned for what we've been facing in the past two years with the pandemic. So we're going to give you a brief overview, like I said, of health services. I'm going to just introduce you to some of the health services offices and our staff. And then I will turn it over to Nurse Shawnee, as we all know her now, and we all know her very, very well.
Yes.
So here in South St. Paul, all of our buildings are staffed with Licensed School Nurses. And Licensed School Nurses are, they are bachelor's prepared registered nurses who are skilled in public health and in school health, which is very important. Each of our health offices also has a health assistant who works under the direction and the guidance of an LSN such as Shawnee. Here you will see our Lincoln Center Elementary Health Office. That is, again, overseen by Shawnee Kruger this year as LSN. And we've got Jen Peterson, who is our health assistant who works very closely with Shawnee in that office. She not only runs that office, she is also COVID coordinator, which we'll get to a little bit later here. Whoops, I think I missed one there. Back, please.
Can you go up? Hit your up arrow, maybe?
I'm going to go, there we go. There is our Capoja Education Center Health Office. We've got Kayla Rogers, who is our LSN there, and Wendy Vang is her health assistant there. And you'll see a picture there of the health office. All of them are pretty standardized, but you'll see a little bit of difference between each one. Our secondary building is staffed by Chris Lafferty, our LSN. We've also got Cam McPhillips and Jenny Schlosser as our health assistants. Now, this is important. We have two health assistants there. In this whole past year, those health assistants have also helped out in different offices around the district. So we've been able to have flexibility. And when we have staffing issues, anything like that, we can quickly put our health assistants in other areas. Because I will say Shawnee has had to go to many health offices in the district this year, as well as many buildings. And we're very happy to have Cam and Jenny able to go then to Lincoln Center to cover for her as well. LSN main duties, I am going to have Shawnee really take this one for you and kind of explain to you what the duties of an LSN are, as well as a health assistant. And then we're going to give you a little look back from the beginning of the pandemic, and Shawnee is going to walk you through how our health services actually supported our community all the way through these past two years. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Shawnee.
Hi, everyone. Nurse Shawnee here. I just, right? So, yes, I am one of the Licensed School Nurses in, do I need to move it up?
You're great. You're great.
Sorry. I'm one of the Licensed School Nurses. I'm at Lincoln Center this year. I've been at Capoja, and I'm also the CLC's nurse. So fun little fact. One of the things that we do is we take care of the student medication administration at school, and we help families coordinate at home as well. So what the good balance is for that. The nurses are in charge of first aid, emergency, and some mental health care. It's a lot, especially during the pandemic, we're seeing a lot of overlap between mental health and physical health, as you've, you're probably hearing. We partner with families regarding health communications, conditions, and concerns. And we also partner with outside agencies within our community and within the metro to help get families the services that they need. A big part of our job is hearing and vision screenings for students as needed. And we also do hearing and vision screenings for every student who's got a special ed eval coming up. So we do a lot of those. We educate health services to students, staff, and families. We do medication and health condition preparation and training of staff for field trips. Before we can send kids out of our buildings, we have to make sure somebody is able to take care of our students when they're not around us as nurses. And then other duties as assigned and fall into our laps, like COVID. True story.
Small little thing, COVID.
Our health assistants, they are such an integral part of our health office team. I wouldn't want to be forced to do my job without one. They check students in and out of the health office. They maintain daily records. They assist students with minor illnesses and injuries. We've trained them in basic first aid. They document and update our records. They communicate constantly with the nurses in the buildings. And then they also administer medication, and they help take care of some illnesses and injuries and then report to us nurses if anything requires further assessment or care. So I threw together a few little numbers, and this is district-wide. The average number of walk-ins in our four, actually three, let's go three buildings that we have with a Licensed School Nurse, we see seventy-two students per day as walk-ins. These are kids that are not scheduled for something. We have eighty-four students per day among these three buildings that come in every day for diabetic cares, or medication, or some other health service need. That's a total of one hundred and fifty-six students that average that our health offices see every day, which in the grand total of things is twenty-six thousand, two hundred and eight students that come and visit our health offices every year.
Wow.
That's what we do on a daily basis.
Wow.
So now, let's everybody just, let's go back two years. Come with me on this journey of COVID.
Do we have to?
We do. We do. It's always good to reflect so we can move forward, right? I want to bring you back to Tuesday, February eleventh, 2020. Facebook rumors. This all started with Facebook, people. Facebook rumors started that South St. Paul Public Schools had their first COVID-19 case. The three LSNs immediately called our contacts at MDH in Dakota County to find out, is it true? Do we really have COVID? And they calmly reassured us that we don't have COVID in South St. Paul yet. So we called the DO, and we let Kelly know who let everybody else know we don't have COVID in South St. Paul. But it started two years ago already. In March, that's when Governor Walz, while we were all enjoying our spring break, Governor Walz shut down our state. And he then issued emergency shutdown. We started preparing for distance learning and emergency childcare after the break for the remainder of the school year. Staff were then reassigned to Capoja, food service, or working from home. March seventeenth, temperature checks began on everyone who entered the building, along with illness screenings. Every person was asked, how are you feeling today? Emergency childcare began. Distancing was enforced, and masks were recommended at the time. In the summer, South St. Paul Public Schools prepared for three scenarios: in-person, hybrid, and distance learning. In August of twenty, August twenty-seventh of 2020, that's when we got our first cases, and we actually had two that same day. So that was our first, we hadn't even started school yet, and we had our first cases. For that autumn, school started. Our secondary was in distance learning. Our elementaries were in hybrid. Just to refresh your memory, positive people isolated for ten days. Close contacts were quarantined for fourteen days from the last date of close contact. Household close contacts were quarantined for twenty-four days from the last date of close contact. And students were sent home for a quarantine period. Classes were in and out of distance learning for the remainder of the school year. January of 2021, the CDC allows for some close contacts to have shortened quarantines. We decided not to continue that because of logistical reasons. But our first South St. Paul Public School staff were vaccinated that month. February twenty-sixth, 2021, Lincoln Center was shut down for two weeks. March, South St. Paul Public Schools offered staff testing twice a month through the end of the school year. In the summer of 2021, we again tried having a mask-free summer school. However, August hit, and Delta began rearing its ugly head. September, masks are again in place for the in-person school year. October, South St. Paul Public Schools was able to order at-home COVID tests for students, and test distribution began for symptomatic students. In December, Omicron first came to Minnesota. Delta was still surging. South St. Paul Public Schools was able to order at-home COVID tests for all of our staff, and every staff person in South St. Paul Public Schools was offered a test before the winter break. January, Omicron surged, and Delta disappeared. South St. Paul Public Schools experienced the highest number of COVID cases I have seen in this entire pandemic. The CDC then offered positive people a return after five days with strict mask-wearing upon return, and we adopted that policy. In February, COVID numbers, I'm proud to say, have sharply decreased. They haven't disappeared yet. Mitigation strategies are still in place for our schools. So that's where we are. So now, let's look at some statistics for COVID. We've been able to give about two thousand at-home COVID test kits to students, staff, and families in this school year. We have been able to do two COVID vaccine clinics, which were held outside of Central Square, and that was for students and for members of our community. I made eighteen, hello, everyone, Nurse Shawnee here, COVID videos for South St. Paul Public Schools. There have been thousands of calls, emails, and texts. I can't even begin to guess how many I've taken over this year. There were seventy-four MDH School Nurse COVID Coordinator online meetings, forty Dakota County School Nurse COVID Coordinator online meetings, and countless number of communication with the Director of Special Services and HR.
So with that, I really want to say thank you to Nurse Shawnee. Thank you to our health services department as a whole. As you can see, it's been quite the journey. And I want to assure the community of South St. Paul and South St. Paul Schools that the health and wellness of all of our stakeholders is of utmost importance. And I cannot tell you how much I have gotten to know Shawnee personally, and she's gotten to know me.
So much that you're dressing the same.
We are dressing the same. I mean, this is constant communication, whether it's a holiday or a weekend, or.
Right.
And I want to, everything, and I want to give a shout out also to Lisa Branddecker, who's been instrumental in communication with, through this whole process, and continues to be as well. We've got a couple pictures here. We've got some pictures of Shawnee in her full PPE. We've got our first shipment of COVID tests we're arriving. These all were momentous experiences for us, and we are very happy to say we could meet the needs of our community. There she is on Nurse Appreciation Day, doing special ed testing at the CLC. As she mentioned, she does cover the CLC as well. And COVID coordination involves the whole family over at the Kruger family, whether they like it or not. So really, I cannot thank her enough for what she has done for our community and for our schools and the entire health services department. Like I said, it's been a unique, unique journey that none of us ever thought we would be in the midst of. So with that, I just want to thank all of you as well for your support. And if there are any questions, we are open for questions.
Yeah. Anybody? Go ahead, Wendy.
Not so much a question, Shawnee and Kelly. I just want to extend to you my thanks, appreciation, and care and love for all that you've done for our students and our staff. And a personal note that I have for Shawnee, whenever I had just a slight, small question, and I would send her, I would send her a question, I got the response back right away from you, and I was so thankful and so much gratitude for you and your staff for what you've done for all of us, to protect us and keep us safe. So there are not enough words out there to share the thank you for you and what you've done.
I'm glad I could help.
Dr. Webb?
So we started this year with kind of an Olympic celebration with our staff. And it was coming off the Olympics with Suni Lee, but we had a number of gold medals that teams could win. And after our celebration, I made a special award ceremony just for Shawnee of her own gold medal. I get a little choked up, because if you take, if you really look at the numbers, just in January alone, in one week where we'll have two hundred kids that were infected by COVID in one of our weeks, that means every family gets personal contact, every family gets communication, every family has questions. And she's been doing this for two years. And not always with two hundred specifically in a week. But I bet nearly every staff member has talked to Shawnee just specifically about their family or their situation. So I just want to give her a superintendent shout out. It's my standing ovation for you, Shawnee, for the incredible dedication you have for our entire community. So on behalf of our entire district, thank you.
Thanks, Shawnee. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly, just before you leave, a couple more things. Nobody does this work alone. Kelly and Kathy Miller, for months in the pandemic, were the heart and soul of our COVID leadership team. Kelly is going to actually be retiring in just a few weeks. And so not only is, do we want to just give Kelly a shout out too for the COVID work for the last two years, but Kelly and I kind of started together as district leaders, Kelly in Special Education, when I became a new superintendent twelve years ago. And Kelly has done an outstanding job and deserves another round of applause, just as our Special Services Director. And she'll be greatly missed. She won't be far, because she lives right across the street from Lincoln Center. But really, has been the heart and soul of special education and always puts our kids first every day. So if we can do another round of applause for Kelly.
And thank you, everyone. It truly has been an honor and a privilege to serve as Special Services Director. And I will miss everyone, and especially the students and families. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to give a big thank you to Lisa Branddecker.
Oh, yes.
You are the, you are the heart and soul of this whole operation. And your follow-through, your dedication, your attention to detail, just, I mean, it's like, okay, should I send her flowers? Should I take her out for dinner? You know, it's like.
Let's embarrass her.
Yeah. I'm just going to embarrass you. But I don't think you get enough props. And what you've done between the pandemic and with the superintendent's search is above and beyond.
Yeah.
So thank you so much, Lisa.
And just that, when we lost our Communication Director two years ago, Lisa still has her regular job and picked up what was quote-unquote "emergency communication." I'll just say, for two years, nearly every day, we've had some emergency COVID-related communication. And second to none, it's always top shelf. I'll also just mention our Board Handbook. One of our consultants who visits the district, when he's out and about, he says, you should go to South St. Paul and download their handbook, because it's second to none. And really, Lisa was point for pulling all those details together. So way to go.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. All right.
All right.
We were clapping fools tonight, weren't we?
fools anyway.
We did want to give an update on our superintendent's search. Last week, we conducted finalist interviews, or semifinalist interviews. We had seven interviews, and we have, after much deliberation on our own privately and then together, we've whittled that down to three very amazing candidates. We followed the leadership profile that the board put together with the help from community and staff through our survey. And we just, we just feel so great about all three candidates. Separately, we've all kind of said, like, whoa, what a decision this is going to be. Anybody else have any thoughts on superintendent search?
I think change is always a little scary and something to be anxious about. But I think what we have in front of us tells us that our district will be in good hands.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we've heard that too, is from the people who've been sitting in, listening to the interviews, that folks have said, like, you can't go wrong, which I think makes us all feel a little bit better. Monica?
I would just say that several of the candidates mentioned that they really, really want to be here, and they want to be here because of the strength of our community, the strength of our policies, the strength of our fund balance policies, of all things. And so I think if we're giving special shout outs today, our previous Finance Director, Erin Brusberger, and then Brady, our new Finance Director, I think are just really, really top-notch professionals who will keep this district fiscally running, running in the right direction.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to confirm those comments, that going into this, there obviously was concern about, you know, what sort of candidates are we going to get, and what will we be ending up with? And I couldn't be more pleased with the three candidates that we have. They all come across well. They're qualified. It's, we're going to be in good hands going forward.
Our finalist interviews are Wednesday afternoon in the media center, and they are open to the public.
And to all the public who's been, like, watching and invested, and were there for meetings before, or who have reached out since to kind of share their thoughts and feedback, I really appreciate your care and interest and support in the process.
Thank you. Dr. Webb?
Well, good evening. We have our superintendent update, our Valentine's update for you tonight. And we are just pleased to just give you a few insights from around the district. So you know, just a few weeks ago, we had Ben Cushion with our Tri-District CAPS program. It's our Career Pathways Program here for South St. Paul. We have a Parent and Student Night, Family Night, which is February twenty-second, six to seven PM. So if you want to literally kick the tires on some of our programs, and transportation, and healthcare, and business, please join us. We're offering a new pathway for this coming year, if enough students enroll, in really the IT area, technology. So we're excited about that, and please feel free to join us. We have some cool things happening during spring break. We're going to launch some art camps. So courses like the Mega Mess Art Camp, and Glow-in-the-Dark Art Camp, and Claylicious Art Camp will be open for students during spring break, if your students or your son or daughter are looking for something to do. We have some SSP Pound Fitness, new classes at Central Square, Cardio Jam Session on Saturdays, eleven fifteen to noon, if you're interested in that. A few other district highlights. We're celebrating and lifting up Black History Month this month, district-wide. We have a number of authors, and we're celebrating, in each of our schools and sites, our Black History and Tradition. We also have I Love to Read Month, so it coincides well with Black History Month as well. And here you can see some students hard at work, just right even outside their classroom. It doesn't matter where you're reading, we just want to continue to promote reading schoolwide. We had Snow Week at the high school. Here's some dodgeball tournament All-Stars. And the dress-up days are always a hit. Here's something cool and new in our school: girls wrestling. So the State High School League this year approved for the first time, girls to be able to participate in wrestling. So we had our first all-girl tournament of six to eight wrestlers who made it onto the podium. So shout out for girls wrestling in South St. Paul. And I think they were told, don't smile for this so we can look tough. So that was good, too.
Be a wrestler.
We have the Kindness Ferry and Ambassadors at Capoja, spreading kindness schoolwide, reminding everyone to be kind each and every day. A few upcoming calendar of events. There's no school on President's Day, February twenty-first. We have the end of trimester, March eleventh and fourteenth, with no school. And then we have our Family Connection Days, our parent-teacher conferences, March seventeenth and twenty-fourth, really through K through grade eight. Our spring break is at the end of the month, toward the end of March, and so keep your eye on that as well. And we'll go back to you.
Great. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is consent items. The consent agenda includes financial claims, bills payable, and our staffing report to have a motion for the approval of our consent items.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Oh, oh, thank you. And that's so funny that I missed it, because John just pointed it out to me, too. That's why I need both of you here. I did miss the item of the public listening session submission. We had one parent staffer come today to talk about, they brought information to us for their request to reconsider the masking policy. So it was kind of serendipitous timing that Shawnee Kruger was here tonight. And we have gotten some emails, too, from folks who are asking us to reconsider the masking policy at this time. So thank you for coming, taking time out, and sending us those communications. Right, next. Next thing on our agenda is policy review, and we are reviewing one policy, which is our fund balance policy. It will be under review on the agenda for. It will be under review on the agenda for three readings, so this is the first of three readings. Do we have, oh, we got to do our thing first, to have a motion for approval?
No.
No.
No, we're, this is just under reading, so it would just be...
Never mind.
Yes.
I got it. Do we, do we have any discussion, or do we do that on the third reading?
And I could give just a taste. We're just updating the policy.
Save me. Thank you, sir.
So we're just updating our fund balance policy to make sure that we're aligned with best practice. Our Finance Director, new Director Brady Hoffman, has really been leading that process and working with the board, and just gave us an overview again tonight of that. So it'll be sitting on our agenda for the next three meetings until final approval.
Great. And Brady was due up, and I was just wanting him to come up earlier, that's why it was, it was all in my plan. So the next item on our agenda are the business items, and we do have approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2022-23 Budget Guiding Change Document. Do I have a motion for the approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Great, thank you. And Brady Hoffman, Director of Finance, is here for a discussion.
Good evening. A big part of our budget process is for the School Board to kind of provide the overarching parameters for the district administration to follow and work through as we're working through the budget process. The vehicle that we use is called the Guiding Change Document. So there's a few components to this document that we've leveraged. The first of those is the results, so what's the goal of the process? What is the School Board's desired outcome for the budget process? What's our current reality? What are the factors that we're dealing with, both internally, externally? So what's the reality of the district? And then the unacceptable means, so what are the things that aren't acceptable for us to pursue through this process that the School Board wouldn't support? So we worked through this Guiding Change Document a couple, back in January, at a work session, and then we reviewed it again this evening. So in the board packet is the final version of the Guiding Change. That is kind of the overarching framework for, for the budget process for us to work through. So we are looking for School Board approval, so we can continue on with our budget process.
Great. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And that, approval carries. Great. The next item is approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the preliminary field trip request for the secondary Spanish classes to travel to Panama City, Panama, March 25th through April 2nd, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks. Second?
Second.
Wonderful. Need, Dr. Webb, do you have some words of discussion?
Sure do. I always have words.
Thanks.
So we are fortunate tonight to have two trips in front of you. This specifically is a Spanish trip to Panama, and it's a spring break a year from now, so not this coming spring break. Our practice in South St. Paul is to always make sure that we are studying things well, looking a year out, and nobody really has the crystal ball on exactly how things will look a year from now. So we want to make sure that travel insurance is included with the proposal, that families have an ability to opt out before the trip, and so we want to make sure we're reviewing that for both of these trips tonight, and ensure that we have a staff member from our site that is leading this. One feature of the Panama program, which is unique, is a four-day homestay, and there aren't many opportunities for you to stay with a family in another country, but here with the travel program in our high school, we'll have that opportunity if the board approves the preliminary approval for Panama tonight.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And the last business item is approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the preliminary 2023 IB history field trip request to France and Spain on March 22nd and April, through April 1st, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks, Chris. And Dr. Webb?
I've got words. So again, what a, what an honor to have an IB history trip that has as much history as we do in South St. Paul. I honestly don't know how many years back it goes, but it's way before my time, and what a great tradition. This year, they are recommending, again, a year ahead, travel to France and Spain in the spring break, next spring break in 2023, March 22nd through April 1st. So super exciting. Conrad is such a history buff and leader, and couldn't be a more knowledgeable, well-studied coach for kids along the way. And then I'll just share one more Conrad story. Right before the pandemic started, they were in Czechoslovakia last year. We were getting calls, we got to get our kids out, and our kids got out, thanks to great staff and leadership. So we want to make sure that we have top-notch staff going with our programs, and again, travel insurance for families, and the ability to opt out if the pandemic were to come back in a different form a year from now. So that's before you tonight.
Great. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Great. Thank you. So that's it for our business items tonight. We'll move on to our board members' reports, our committee updates, or where you've seen our passion, and we can start with Wendy.
First off, I want to wish everybody a happy Valentine's, and express my thanks and love to our staff, our families, our students, for their support in everything that's been going on in the world, and I just want everyone to be safe with, with the COVID. Protect yourself, your families, and everything. So huge thank you goes out again to Nurse Shawnee Kruger, as we met earlier when she was here, and her nursing staff, and of course, Kelly Tetrick, their director. So we thank them very, very much. And the other thing I'd like to share is with the Educational Foundation, as you know, each year they give out scholarships, and for the students, the seniors at the secondary building. Your applications are due this week, on Wednesday, the 16th. Fill out your applications online, submit them. The Foundation is giving out $470,000 in scholarships this year. So that's an increase of quite a bit of money again, so there's a lot of opportunities for students to apply for those scholarships, as the, they will be presented in May, so we look forward to that. And so make sure kids get your scholarships in to support yourself as you head off to your career plans. So thank you very much.
Well, it's hard to make much of an impression following that, so I'll, I'll just say Happy Valentine's Day, and that's all I have for tonight.
And I'd like to offer congratulations to the boys' basketball team. They're 20-0 now, and they are just doing a fabulous job, and they have pulled together in spite of some hardships, and I just hope everybody can throw their, their support and their Packer pride behind the boys' basketball team.
Great.
To me?
Yes, Mr. Bill.
Oh, I just want to expand on what Nikki said. The basketball team is at home, 7 o'clock Wednesday night against the Hastings Raiders, and it's the best entertainment for the dollar you can find anywhere, so go Packers.
Go Packers.
I wanted to just say, again, Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. I also wanted to echo what was said earlier about the community involvement in our superintendent search. It's been great to go there and see, you know, lots of different people who are willing to like sit in a meeting for five hours, like, and just sort of sit there and take it all in, and I just really admire their passion and their dedication to that process. Once again, great winter sports activities from the girls' wrestling, and basketball, and gymnastics, and hockey, and all the other great sports that are going on. And yeah, we just, you know, have a great President's Day weekend, and enjoy.
The South St. Paul Open is starting to put some energy into some exciting plans for some fundraising, with potentially a concert at the airport, which we look forward to executing. During our committee meeting prior to here, Dr. Michael Favor from 917 came in to just kind of bridge our relationship with that district and let us know what was going on there, and I want to thank him for coming by. It was great to meet him and see all of the opportunities that they serve for our students.
Absolutely. Great. Yeah, thank you for remembering that. And I heard you briefly mention the gymnastics team. They made a state run, unfortunately didn't make it, but they had an amazing year, so congratulations gymnastics team. And that's, that's all for tonight. Wow. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn Monday, February 14th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? And that motion carries. The meeting's adjourned at, does that say?
6:41.
6:41. PM.